Two amendments under administrative reports. We'll add BHS field trip and basketball game ad. So those items will come right after number four, which is another field trip request. So possible supplemental benefits and operations update will become items seven and eight. Is there a second?
Oh, sorry, yes.
Okay. All those in favor of the agenda with the two amendments as suggested can say aye. Raise your right hand.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, seven zero. Right, I invite you to stand or pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. First up, any announcements or community engagement opportunities for any of the buildings you want to talk about? No problem? Okay. All right. Then we have the consent agenda, item C. Motion for approval. Someone's ready for that.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented. Aye.
Okay, I didn't, was...
Tony won.
Okay. Andy moved and Tony seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor, please say aye. Raise your right hand. Motion carries, seven zero. All right, we have a number of recognitions tonight, and thank you so much for taking the time to be here. We are going to start... Mr. Wallsmith, would you mind coming up too for the portion of our evening for our intermediate center students? We have two, and I'm going to do them at the same time because sometimes that makes us feel more comfortable. We have August Wiles and Reagan for shears. You guys want to come forward? All right. So Reagan, I'll do you first, is that okay? Okay. So, okay, that way you'll know how it's going to work. So Reagan participated in a poster contest. Do you mind talking about that a little bit?
Put the brakes on traffic fatalities by Kansas Department of Transportation, and she was the overall winner in the entire state of Kansas.
It's a really big deal. So that was the entire Department of Transportation for the entire state of Kansas, and of all the kids who made posters.
And she got a, she got an assembly recognizing her, so she got a bicycle, a helmet, tickets. What did you, what were the tickets for? Movie tickets, and then still working on, she was $200 cash prize for a classroom.
Wow. I didn't even know about that. That's amazing.
In addition to being...
That is wonderful. Well, so now I'm going to read you what it says on this certificate, and then I'm going to hand it to you, and we're going to clap for you, okay? All right. So the Balden City Board of Education of USD 348 supports and promotes excellence in all school activities. So on this day, November 21st, the Board of Education, so that's everybody who's up here, all right, recognizes and congratulates Reagan as being the statewide winner of Put the Brakes on Fatalities Day poster contest. Now we're going to clap for you and say congratulations. And now, August, it's your turn, okay? Is that cool with you? Okay. So August was in a really cool engineering competition. It was hosted by the University of Kansas, and can you talk about what you did at that competition and what you worked on for that?
It was to go to a building that were at fifty feet. There was a competition to get absolute accuracy. It was like a needle by a reader and have to locate that we had to get. It was pretty tricky, so we had to hit it. Another contest was for, the other part of the contest was for how much distance. So for my distance, I got like one and a half days for all points both times. And from the flight, I got it, well, from the accuracy, I probably got almost on target and on target.
That is amazing. And I, you know, I have to tell you that that is not those skills that you already have. Those are not things that I'm good at. So I really admire people who not only have the skills, but people like you who do those extra things and go to those extra competitions, because you know what? When you do that, it helps not just people your age, but people of all ages learn more about engineering in general, because it's so important. And we're so happy for you and proud of you. August competed against a lot of people from a lot of different schools and came out on top, and that is extremely impressive. So congratulations. I'm going to do the same thing. I'm going to redo this certificate, okay? And give it to you, and we're all going to clap for you. Sound good? Okay. So this wasn't too painful, was it? Yeah, that's true. The Balden City Board of Education of USD 348 supports and promotes excellence in all school activities. So on this day, November 21st, the Board of Education recognizes and congratulates August Wiles for the Kansas University Aerospace Engineering Competition winner. Congratulations. We have, for these, I don't think we have anybody in attendance, because they're already in other sport seasons. So I do want to acknowledge, and we'll make sure that they get the certificates, so we'll kind of do all that en masse, because I'm not seeing...
I'm trying to take you outside, but I can't.
They're here for environmental club presentation, so they're waiting. Yep, I know them. Okay, so if they come in later, we can clap for them, but for now, let's still go ahead and do the recognition itself. The item number three is the boys soccer team. If you haven't been following, these guys ended up being the state runner-up for four A, which is incredible. Oh, is the coach out here?
There's like three in the back.
Okay, it's on to come in.
Hi Fred.
Hi.
It's your turn.
Can we come back to them?
Sure. You know what? We'll just punt on all of the, we'll give them a little more time, the teams. Moving down to the Balden City Chapter, PEO. That is a philanthropic organization, and that group of ladies, I don't see any of them here either, but we still want to thank them.
Yes, and I need to pull up. So we had a PEO group. It's a, what, a chapter for CK, for Balden City. They did a, an appreciation day for the staff in our district. They made four giant platters of snacks and goodies and delivered them each to the building, just in recognition and thanks, coming from, from that, from that chapter. But it was, it was great to have them here, but it was honestly on behalf of the entire chapter, the CK chapter.
Well, it was really cool. This was not like a small little plate. It was, it was a spread, so these were, these were very generous. So we, we thank them for their generosity and also for just supporting our staff. Giving a little more time for teams. Can we educational program highlight, since we have IC stu... Dan, is that something you're ready to go to if we circle back? It says inter...
Casey.
Oh, there you are. I'm sorry, Casey, pardon me. If you don't mind, Casey, we'll go ahead and jump to that so that we can give our soccer cross-country, they're, they're probably at basketball practice, and if, if they're coming, they're also used to coming at seven, because we used to have executive session first, so we'll buy them a little time.
Do you want to stay up here?
Nope, there's Eli. Yep, this will work out great.
Okay, so Mr. Wallsmith asked me to come and do the educational program highlight, just some things that are going on over at the IC right now. One of the first things that we have going on... There we go. Is the student council. We've been working really hard to make it a very democratic process, which means that all the decisions that go through our system have been using the Robert rules of order, so they are practicing all the things that you guys do here. It's actually very fun to watch. We had our last meeting on Friday, and for the first time, they handled the entire beginning of the agenda without our help, and so it was fantastic to watch that. We've also moved away from having so much of a service-oriented type of program. They are doing service in the community, but they are also working on making decisions in the school that impact theirs themselves and our, and our community. And then in December, they decided on Friday to have a bake sale to benefit the Humane Society, so we do that in December. The next thing I was going to talk about is standards-based grading. As you guys are probably aware, we've been transitioning to standards-based grading over the course of the past couple of years. And what it is for us is a systematic way of measuring success, which uses growth mindset, so it gets away from the A, B, C, D, F. So even if you're getting 50% of something right, you're still learning. That doesn't mean you're failing, it means you're growing. We also don't punish for practice, so that doesn't, that means we don't have to grade every single thing that they do. Sometimes it just takes practice, like riding a bicycle. So I love that analogy, because when a kid gets on a bicycle, you don't punish them if they can't do it perfectly the first time. You give them lots of opportunities to practice. So our grade card has been a work in progress. We've been talking a lot about the different standards, and some of the standards you can't score a four on, like for example, capitalization doesn't really show a creative aspect, so you either do it or you don't. So you're probably going to see some of those things coming through as we continue to tweak our grade cards to reflect those ideas. Another thing that the IC has going is Liz Overmeyer and I are representing our wellness challenge for the, the second quarter, so we're going to be doing a water challenge. And Liz is going to be sending out some emails, letting everybody know why it's important to drink water, how much water you should actually drink, because we were trying to think about ways to keep ourselves healthy during the holiday season. So that's what we're going to be doing. And then finally, I'm super excited about this opportunity. I went to a training with Drew Izing about a month ago for the Kid Wind Challenge. His high school students are currently participating in the Kid Wind Challenge, and so I got to go see all of the great things that they were doing, and we decided to start a fourth grade team. So our team is going to be competing March 3rd in Burlington, and it's, have you guys ever heard of it? It's a program where kids get to engineer using basic materials to try to see what kind of windmill structure they can create that gives off the most energy or creates the most energy, and they put them in, you can see the box, they put them in a wind tunnel and try to figure out how much energy they can create. So it has to do with angles of the blades, has to do with materials, and what we saw was really great. It's hosted by the Department of Energy and Extension with the K-State Engineering Program. So more to come on that, and very excited to see what our kids do. So those are the things we've got going on at the IC.
I'm sorry, Casey, you might have said this. So is that across the entire fourth grade then?
Yeah, so what we decided to do, we met as a team, because we've already had those standards in the first quarter, we're going to do an after-school program, so the kids are going to get to sign up, and then we're going to mix them up amongst the different classes, so they're not just one class represented. And then we get to have a, a competition amongst the teams, and then take the top two teams. So the Kansas Energy Program is really great. They let us borrow all the materials we need to test it and to make sure it's working, and, and then we get to take those teams, so.
That's awesome. Thank you very much. Anybody else have questions?
Yeah, I'm intrigued by the water challenge. Is this going on right now?
We're going to be sending out emails after Thanksgiving, so it's just sort of a challenge, a friendly challenge amongst the buildings, to keep track of how much water we're drinking, and, and then there's a prize at the end.
This seems like a lot of water.
Well, yes, I mean, depending on what your weight is, you have to calculate how many ounces is the appropriate amount.
I see that. During a time where coffee will, coffee consumption will...
And so...
Quite a bit, I think, is coming around at this time.
Yeah.
But it has to just be straight water, right?
Well, there's...
Or can it be any, can it be coffee or...
I mean, I think you can make the argument that you're still drinking water, but there are some apps that we're going to be sending out, that you can actually put different drinks in, and it will calculate the actual amount of water that's within that drink.
Okay.
Looking for the loopholes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've never seen this, but...
Yeah.
Getting kids off pop. So is this the kids or the staff?
This is for the adults. This is staff. Yeah, this is staff.
This is a byproduct of the wellness committee.
Change the whole thing for me now.
Yeah, yeah, so a couple of years ago, we started the Wellness Committee, and each quarter, we tried to do, have different schools host a challenge, so IC is hosting this next challenge, so.
Well, but you know, I would suggest that we include the school board coming to the water challenge.
I would be happy to send you the...
Throw that down.
Yeah. Yeah. Anything else? Yeah.
All right.
While we transition, I found the names of the individual that spearheaded all of this. I wanted to make sure before we, from the CK chapter, Barbara Fresco, Jan Boyd, Kathleen Thomas, and Marcia O'Neal were the four that kind of spearheaded the delivery of the goodies. So I want to make sure that we got, we got their names tied to that, but it was on behalf of the whole chapter.
Awesome. All right, do we have the boys soccer team who are here? Is that, are they all signed? Okay, they're listed first, so we can do them, and then we'll do girls cross-country and then boys cross-country, is how it's listed, so come on in, don't be shy. Come on in. No one will bother you. Welcome. You know what, if you guys just want to spread out, so everyone can stare at you awkwardly up in your area. No, just pretend like you're back on the field, getting all the applause and support that you guys deserve, you had an incredible season. Your coaches are here. Coaches, come on up too, yes.
I want some to come back.
Okay.
The bad, you guys have to stare.
We can stall. So we have all of these individual certificates.
There's a lot out due to sickness.
Yeah, I totally understand. Sorry, Coach Cox. We just wanted to make sure you guys had a chance to come and be recognized. It isn't, as you guys know, it's not just about getting the state runner-up, it's, it's so much more than that. It's what you do every day. I know you guys hear that message, it's on the field, it's in the classroom, it's how you represent yourselves, in the hallways, on the field, throughout the community, and it's really, really nice when all of those things culminate in such an amazing season. So far this, they've ever gone. What other stats would you like to add, Coach McKeon? Who, by the way, was just named as Coach of the Year. Just throwing that out there.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, so this is Ryan Cox. Ryan has been here ever since I became head coach. He's been an amazing partner to work with. He's as much a part of that Coach of the Year as I am. Complete confidence in what he does, the boys have all his respect. This has been Engel, Ben's been here, this is his second year. I've told several people, I coached him in college when he was a collegiate player, and I never would have thought he's standing next to me right now. He's a...
We all hear it.
He brings a lot of soccer knowledge, but also a lot of respect for players as well, so. Yeah, I think it's important to recognize the team for what they've done. This is the farthest that a, a boys sports team has gone since 1988, and I wasn't even in high school then, so it's been a long time, so it's a huge accomplishment for all of us, not just the boys, they did most of the work, but the coaches, the parents, we had fantastic parental support, administration support, so it takes a very big group to do what we did this year. We have over 40 boys playing. We started June 1st, believe it or not. We had about, probably have 25 every day during summer training, which is amazing, and that's, that's one reason why we had such a successful year. A couple of stats. We, we had a 200 to win for the program this year, which is pretty cool. The seniors this year, they won, I think, 50 total games in their career, which is outstanding. We had a school record 10 shutouts, and we have a few defenders up here. I mean, that, that's a total team effort. I know Engler really came along as goalkeeper the last part of the year, but he had a good defense prime, but he made some outstanding saves as he went along as well. Caleb Carv, he's not here today. He was named midfielder of the year, which is the first time we've ever had a soccer player from Balden named a player of the year. He finished, I think, with 35 goals, and, which puts him fifth all time, as a goal scorer, and that's the most goals, second most goals a midfielder has ever scored in school. Cooper Carr, his brother, was named freshman of the year, and finished with the school freshman record of 14 goals. If there's anything else, I'm forgetting. But we lost one game this year to a, a team in our classification until the state final, and that was Udora, and we kind of went to the, we did, we were playing okay, but we decided to make some changes, and we took off from there, so sometimes loss is hope. I think...
When does the banner get hung, geez?
It's been ordered.
It's been ordered.
That's all I know.
Okay, so...
We're hoping for January 10th as well.
We're hoping, maybe with every other supply and matching perples, it could take them some time.
So once, if you, it's top three, right? Top three, you get a banner.
Top three, you get a banner.
Yeah, in the gym, so be watching for that, because that will be, if you weren't able to be a part of coming up and cheering people on, that would be another indoor opportunity that's climate-controlled, that you could come back when that date is available to congratulate all these guys.
I do want to say just a couple of things. We also, I'm a big believer in change, and we changed some, the way we do some things this year, and we instilled, this is an idea I heard from someone else, we took an acronym, and this was completely selected by the alumni, of PACE, pace, and instead of saying dogs on, on three or on two, we say pace now, and it stands for preparation, and you know, when everyone comes to summer training, to me, that's getting ready for it. The coaches, we do our part in scouting, things like that. Parents are helping us out with snacks and lots of other stuff. Accountability is the A, character is the C, and effort is the E, and it takes a lot of other words to make those words happen. And one of them is resiliency, and we were time and time again not in the top 10 in rankings, and that kind of fueled us. And we found ourselves down in games a lot, sometimes by two goals, and we still won, and that's resiliency. But Ricardo right there, come on, wave your hand. Probably effort and character, preparation, and account all those, he sums it up, because he was our centerback, and we weren't playing the way we wanted to from the back to the front, and he lost his spot at centerback. A lot of kids, especially high schoolers, would, would pout. Yeah, he's standing next to the guy who took his spot. A lot of, a lot of these players, they would pout, they would, you know, hide, hide on the field. He did the opposite. He went out, he worked hard, he scored, what, a game winner in the regional final, and a game winner that sent us to state. So great job by Ricardo. Another guy's not here is Humler Graham, he's senior, and he's been playing with all these guys, you know, ever since I think he was like seven or eight, and he, he was amazing, because he didn't play very much towards the end of the year, but I can see it when we went to the state and the final was so blue and we did not win, I can see how important it was to him, so.
Well, what I'm going to do is I'm going to read the blankets, because there's a lot of certificates here. What I'm going to do is I'm going to read that this extends to each of you for all of your efforts, I'm going to give your certificates to your coach, but I also want to shake each one of your hand, because we are really happy for all of you, we're happy for those who couldn't shake it, because odds are they're at basketball practice or, you know, working somewhere, you all do a lot of different things, but we did want to make sure and take the time to acknowledge your accomplishments and all the work that you guys put in to get to this point. So the Balden City Board of Education of USD 348 supports and promotes excellence in all school activities. On this day, November 21st, the Board of Education recognizes and congratulates each member of Balden High School Boys Soccer Team, and as being the four A state runner-up, and you are, you're a public school champion in my book, and, you know, we don't, we don't focus on that, what we focus on is all the things that you did over the summer, the 25 a day thing. I'll remember that for a while, but that's what it takes to get results. So we're proud of you and congratulations. Congratulations. Pleasure coaching you. Congratulations. I think your hands might be colder than mine. Congratulations. Congratulating. Congratulating. Thank you, guys.
I know, wait.
Oh, here they come.
They're late.
That's all right. There you go. Let's hear it. We just did it, but we have, here's our, our player freshman of the year, second of the year, goalkeeper.
All state, all three, all state.
Yep, all three, all state. So, well, now that more people are here, clap for them again. Okay, for those of you, so here's something special, because some of you are going to be staying put to talk about cross-country. So just to kind of segue here, if the girls and boys cross-country teams could come up, we'll just do everybody all together. So you might notice the number of, face that way. Oh, oh, I'm sorry. Come over here and face this way.
They can, they can be spread out a lot here as long as they're facing the door.
Okay, I always forget about the whole... Yeah, okay, there we go.
The audience in the world is that direction.
Yeah, right.
In the world.
I can't see all the way over here. Just like, face the door.
Yeah, just face them.
Oh, we can...
Yeah, just face them.
Talon, call them.
There you go.
Okay, so you may notice that many of the same folks who were just here, the reason why they were coming in hot was because they were coming in from basketball practice and other things, so thank you for taking the time to be here. But what was extra special for the boys this year is, as you'll notice, so many of the guys who were a part of the state champion, or runner-up championship for soccer, were also a huge part of our cross-country team. And Coach Spielman can talk more to the specifics of any stats that he would like to share, but this was the first time in a while that the boys had made it to state, and so it's a huge accomplishment. They ended up fifth at state. Our girls ended up also, like the boys soccer team, they were also our state champion runner-up. So these are, this is a very, very big deal. Coach Spielman, is there anything you would like to add?
I'll make it quick for you. We just want to thank everybody for all their support. I mean, that's the, that's a huge deal for, for all these groups, you know, it's all the, the support we get is, is just awesome. And I'll just quick announce them so that they get their due here. We got Caleb Carv, Brian Butel, Talon Torres, Cooper Carr, Jaden Landreth, Ian Rimmer, Nick Johnson, we got Baron Drummond, Lily Breckisen, Bailey Smith, and Ireland Kennedy, and these are just some of them. We've got some sick, we've got some, I think, doing some other things yet tonight, so these are the ones that are here, and they just did an unbelievable job. And you know, Coach McKeon talked about it before, it's that, it's the extra effort and the hard work and all those things that they put in to be at this level, because when everybody starts the season, everybody wants to be state champ, they want to be in the top three and get a trophy, but there's only one that gets to be state champ, only three that get trophies out of all the teams in the state, and so to be one of those teams is a really neat deal, and, and so just working for that, and the camaraderie that they got from each other and support is really neat, and I think they're all real happy with the season they had, and they've just done a great job, and, and so they just want to thank everybody here too for all the support, the parents and everybody that came out and patted them on the back and chased them around the course and did all those things, and so it's been a really neat deal for, for the season this year, and they're excited about it, so that's all I have for them.
Okay, well, you know, every season is special, and my, my joke is, you know, in between, they have to find somebody to give Coach of the Year to in between the seasons if they don't give it to Coach Spielman, because the work is incredible, it happens year after year. So kind of doing everybody together again for boys. Balden City Board of Education of USD 348 supports and promotes excellence in all school activities. On this day, November 21st, the Board of Education recognizes and congratulates the boys state cross-country team, each of you, for qualifying to go to state this year. And now you know what it feels like, and you were doing all that in soccer too. It's hard, so much harder than what people realize, but we hope you know that we get it. Some of you are doing musical, I mean, it's essentially dual sporting, and that was, that was the heart of your team, so it's, it's incredible. Congratulations. 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 And then girls. Balden City Board of Education of USD 348 supports and promotes excellence in all school activities. So on this day, November 21st, we recognize and congratulate the Balden High School Girls' Cross-Country Team for your second place finish at state. Congratulations, we are proud of you. activities. So on this day, November 21st, we recognize and congratulate the Balden High School Girls' Cross-Country Team for your second place finish at state. Congratulations, we are proud of you. All right, thank you guys for coming. Feel free to stick around for all the excitement that's to follow.
One thing that I would like to say that impresses me, both from the soccer team and the cross-country team, is number one, the leadership of the students that were performing that. For you guys that were playing soccer and then turning around and running three and a half miles, it's amazing, that's three and a half miles more than I could ever do, but that was pretty impressive, and the ladies, how you all rallied around each other and supported each other and viewed it as a team as opposed to individual. And then the soccer, your soccer squad back there, the ability to go through leadership and rally around each other throughout the course of the season was fun to watch, and you guys have done this without a feeder program at the middle, so at the junior high level. And that shows that your individual talents, that show your dedication to each other and your dedication to your school, so hats off to you. You guys are very impressive young men and women back there. Thank you.
And if you could just stick around for one more thing, because you'll want to be the, we're going to announce the Balden Employee of the Month, so if you guys will just stick around because you'll want to cheer for that, okay? Yeah, thank you. Do you want to grab this?
Yes.
All right. If we could invite Mr. Ben Curry up.
I've always wanted to take one of these and like brace it over my shoulder. Now I can.
Yeah, I guess we're supposed to, I always forget, we're supposed to look at this way but get also that way. So, Mr. Dodge will share some comments, but as you know, we've begun a program that we're really, really excited about, the culture of our school and our community, and that is our Employee of the Month program. Along with that, there's a certain prize that is involved, not only from the district, but also the Balden Education Foundation is a co-sponsor of that and provides a monetary gift for the staff member who is selected. Mr. Dodge is going to read some of the specifics, but Mr. Curry has served in, he's currently serving as our Assistant Principal and Athletic Director in the Junior High. He's been a classroom teacher, he's coached everything, I mean, almost everything, as I think back. I know just, and he's also the kind of guy that, what can I do to help? I've been on the receiving end of that many times where it's, hey, what can I do? He actually helped out our booster club just today and restocked the soda pop in the pop-a-shop storage closet, not because he has to, but because it's just who he is. So we're very, very proud that you are Employee of the Month. Mr. Dodge is going to add to that.
So we get nominations from staff, and this is something that the staff has shared about, about Ben here. It says, he has done an amazing job helping our sports programs. He has gone above and beyond to make sure our coaches and athletes have the best possible experience. He's constantly going above and beyond to help students learn, both from their good and bad choices. It's obvious to staff and students that he believes in them and he supports them to be the very best that they can be. It says during Spirit Week at the end of October, he was constantly in the hallways and during passing time talking to students, encouraging them to have a good day, and saying goodbye as they leave school. He's built meaningful connections with everyone. He's constantly thinking of ways to make the Junior High a better place for students and staff. His addition as a Junior High A D and Assistant Principal has been an absolute home run for our school. So with that, you get to wear our championship belt for the month of November, your Employee of the Month. He's a great way to be an announcer today, too. I thought he did an amazing job for that.
Thank you, guys.
And that needs to be visible while we're making sure that the kids at their school.
I'll wear it tomorrow. I was thinking about bringing my, or my, sorry.
There you go. Thank you for all you do, Ben.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. All right. All right, that concludes our recognition portion of the agenda. So thank you all for coming. Being the month of November, we have a lot to be grateful for, and this is a small, small portion of that, so thank you all very much. It is 7:05. Do we have any public comments signed up? Miss Megan? So, well, Megan's bringing that forward. Public comment is an opportunity for the board to listen. In accordance to District Policy B C B I, this is the agenda line during the meeting. When an individual may address the board, the board ball comes up to 10 patrons to speak. Each of the patrons will have the opportunity to speak for three minutes. Those wishing to make public comment are asked to sign up on the night of the meeting prior to 7:00 P M, with the exception of not discussing specific matters related to identifying students or staff by name due to confidentiality considerations. There are no restrictions regarding the subject matter the patron wishes to share with the board. Also, if a delegation of persons comes to discuss a single issue, every effort should be made to avoid redundancy by each person, stating only new facts or new perceptions during their allotted time. Board members are not to respond during this time. Again, this is the time established in the meeting for board members to prioritize listening to the public. And with that, we have Mike Kennedy who signed up to speak about, to the potential bond issue.
Thank you, and I wish all of you preemptively a happy Thanksgiving, safe Thanksgiving with your families and friends. So I came here tonight to speak about an email that I sent to the board just prior to the meeting, I wanted to make it public knowledge as well. Last month, Piper Sandler provided the board with a forecast of debt service based on their particular set of assumptions on bond interest rate, property valuation growth, tax collection rate, and the so-called zero-mill rate increase proposal that has been circulating in the emails from the school to the community. Within the disclosure, Piper does state that Piper Sandler is providing the information contained herein for discussion purposes only, in anticipation of being engaged to serve as an underwriter or placement agent on a future transaction, and not as a financial advisor or a municipal advisor. In other words, USD 348 should not be using Piper Sandler's analysis to determine policy as the firm has a conflict of interest. So I believe you have an obligation to conduct an independent sensitivity analysis of the outlook which Piper Sandler has presented to you, and to conduct this analysis transparently with report to the community before any vote to place the bond issue with the voters. We all know that we've had a rapid increase in interest rates enacted by the Fed, we have very high inflation, and we have a forecast of recession in the 2023 and 2024 years by many experts. So it's vitally important to look at how these factors may impact USD 348's future liquidity in the bond and interest account, should this bond be put to the voters in 2023 before any information is known about the outcome of the economy. So we need to look at the negative impacts that the bond interest rate increasing, or property valuations going down due to a great increase in our mortgage interest rates, lending rates, or whether tax collection rates will fall below the 95% that they predict due to people defaulting because we're in a recession. People are losing jobs, people have to choose between eating their homes or paying their taxes or buying food. All these are potential impacts. So I've sent you an email with an Excel spreadsheet, I have a copy here, which I'm more than happy to leave with the board, of reproducing Piper's information. I've also performed some sensitivity analysis for you. I encourage you to look at the Excel spreadsheet and look at the potential impacts of some of these assumptions. I'll point out in one particular case, just a 5% decrease in valuation next year, coming off of record hot, record low interest rates, super hot housing market, has the potential to put this account in the negative in the coming years. That would mean you would need to increase your mill rates on this account in order to cover the debt obligations, and that would be against what you have currently proposed in your language in these emails as a zero-mill rate increase. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, financial reports. First up, we have Food and Nutrition can carry over. Mr. Oleg.
Well, Nathan's coming up here. We've talked about this in various, various times with food and nutrition, I guess, with free meals for all students for the last couple of years, many districts were in a situation where that reimbursement rate allowed for a carryover to reach a point that you can only carry over three months worth. And we expected to be notified that we need to do, spend that down, as other districts received the same similar notification. So we got that, and at this time, I'll turn it over to Nathan.
Yeah, thanks, Mark. Like Mark just shared, and what I shared last week with the board communication, so we are over in excess, so we have additional funds in food and service that we do, are required to spend down, just through their expectations, which that amount by, allowed in the regulation is about $152,000. So we were required to answer a survey in lieu of how, what is our plan to spend those funds down? The K S D E is understanding, again, for the last two years because of COVID, that a lot of districts are in the same position. So they understand with rising food costs, decreased participation, and labor costs, they understand it's going to take some time. There is no deadline necessarily to spend down funds. Our purpose this evening is to look at the base rate for our staff. Comparatively, through our district, just our neighboring districts, you know, we are on the lower side of the base salary rate. Our intention, again, to communicate to the board, our current base is $11.42 for classified, and we're seeking to look at going up to $12 per hour. So in turn, raising the base to 12 and also adding to the additional staff that are currently employed. That comes out to 58 cents per individual, about $17,000 per year is one of our initial plans. Also, looking at, again, depending on how the food costs trend, the extra bonus may be additional equipment for the use of those funds. So, again, seeking approval to do that this evening through the personnel report later on. But do you guys have any questions on what I sent to the board?
I just had a process question, but I think you just answered it. We don't need to do a separate motion, that can be just part of the personnel report at the end?
I believe that is correct, yes.
Okay.
The discussion that I've had with Nicole dating back to the summer, she and Mr. Dorothy had a discussion dating back to last school year about what can we do to increase the wages for the food service staff? Because these are food service funds that can only be spent in certain ways, and this allows us to do that, and it allows us to get the wages up so that she can be more competitive with the hiring and filling of positions for our staff. If we could spread that, spread the wealth, if you will, to the other faculty staff, we certainly would, but this allows us to take care of the food service staff, with funds directly connected to their line.
Is this sustainable?
Yes, that was, that was part of the discussion of how, how much could we do and needed to be sustainable over time, and that's where the, we're looking at it being an increase of costs of about $17,000. It's impossible currently.
So, no action, we can do that.
No, that'll be done in the personal report.
All right, thank you. All right, administrative reports. We have the V H S Environmental Club recycling presentation, so we'd like to welcome our guests. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for having us. To start, there, I'm informed there should be handouts already in your folders. If any of you don't have one, I have a lot of extra here. I am the Balden High School Environmental Club President. This is.
I'm Mikey Reynolds, I'm the Vice President.
Yes, and so we, as we just said, are the Balden High School Environmental Club. We were established our freshman year, and we already have 60-plus members, so that's one in every seven students that are involved in our club. Some things we do.
We've done quite a bit. We've done cleanups and like service days. We have plant sales quite often in the school. We've done hikes and picnics. We've made a song. We funded a compost.
We bought a compost tumbler.
Compost tumbler, we get that, yeah.
But we are ready to move on to the next step. So our goal today is to get funding for recycling every year. We want to start as soon as possible, January through June, and we will get to that in a little bit.
Some effects of waste on the environment. First of all, 79% of recyclables are thrown away. Landfills produce CO2 and methane, which methane is 84 times worth of CO2. Of course, these lead to temperature rises in the atmosphere. Plastic takes more than 450 years to start decomposing. If you think about just in the school or in your day-to-day life, how much plastic you come across and how much ends up in trash, and think of that, decomposing in 450 years kind of puts it in perspective.
For example, like, second breakfast every day, there's multiple prepackaged plastic things in every single little sack lunch. Or.
All the forks.
Yeah, concession stands, all the plastic they generate every evening.
It takes 95% less energy to recycle aluminum than it does to produce it. A lot of recycling is more about having to produce less and reuse what we already have. 100, sorry, 1.8 million acres have been lost to US land, in the US to landfills, and this is increasing. And that's bad because pollutants pollute into the soil and can harm groundwater and plant life, especially in Kansas, which is a big agriculture economy that affects farms heavily.
Pollutants, they're called leachates, to be specific. They go into the ground and soil, and they decrease oxygen levels, and sometimes they can even create dead zones where nothing will grow.
Landfills threaten health. There's a study done in New York, and this study said that those living within a mile of landfills have increased health threats. One factor of that is a 12% increase in child malformations for those living within a mile. There's temperature fluctuations, of course, will raise the cost of food and heating. A C, which in schools is used quite often, just lead to an increase in prices for all of that. It can also affect some buildings and parking lots, which would cause extreme maintenance repairs. And many rooms in our school have just tons of bags of recyclables that have nowhere to go.
All right, we do know that climate change, though, may be a controversial issue for some. We hope you'll see that there are many other benefits to recycling other than helping climate change. So the mission of Balden High School is to provide students academic opportunities for college and career readiness while developing critical thinkers and problem solvers who are positive contributing members of society. To many students at V H S, without a reliable recycling system, Balden High School is not living up to this mission, which we literally copied and pasted from the website. As problem solvers, part of our job should be solving issues involving our planet and communities' well-being. Recycling creates individual purpose, encourages serving a role in the literal environments, but also our high school environment. Unfortunately, the United States is not even in the top 10 recycling countries on the planet, according to the Organization for Economic Cooperation and Development. Fortunately, though, global recycling rates are growing, and it's only fitting that we keep up with the times. Lastly, students from a young age have been taught to reduce, reuse, and cycle. I know from personal experience that I've memorized those symbols and I've memorized that little phrase. The fact that we're in high school with the chance to finally be able to do that and with nothing happening, it seems like a letdown.
And schools are just preparing the future generations, and I think truly recycling is one of the most effective ways to have a happy and healthy environment and planning for those future generations, and we'll educate them to keep that going. Some general benefits of this at our school would be, first of all, cleaner campus. Some general benefits of this at our school would be, first of all, cleaner campus, and it just promotes a better learning environment. Of course, quite a bit of high schoolers will go to college, and college in quite a bit of colleges, environmental science, conservation studies are required classes. So this can, first of all, just kind of give them an upper hand on those. It encourages participation from all students, and they see their classmates doing it, they want to join in. And students will feel as they're contributing to a greater cause because they really are, and they'll see it all around them. And we can even earn money back through this. There's quite a bit of grants in, just in Kansas. I'll list a few here. The Kansas Department of Health and Environmental Green School Grant, the US Department of Agricultural Solid Waste Management Grant, and the Mid-America Regional Council School Grant. Those are just three of the grants that we can get for having a recycling program.
Back to the students who feel as they are contributing to a greater cause. I've had a couple students, one in particular, that has stood out to me. They came up to me one time, and they're like, hey, I'm recycling this paper. And unfortunately, I had to break the news to them that nothing happens to the things that are recycled, that are being put in the recycling bins. And upon hearing that news, he was so devastated and disappointed because he had thought, like his whole high school career, that he was actually recycling and making a difference. And this student, I mean, represents the whole student body, especially those that are in Environmental Club. It is also convenient for our hardworking teachers. We surveyed our teachers. We got 28 responses. 39% of them said that they already take out their own recycling on their own time without Many teachers are under the impression that we still recycle, but if they knew that we didn't, 50% of them said that they would continue to take out recycling on their own time if they had to.
In the survey, here's just some quotes that we got from teachers, kind of going over their thoughts on it. "I think we should prioritize recycling as a society, community, and school. A school has a ton of waste. I would like it if it were taken care of by a group here at school. It makes my life much more convenient. While I take my recycling home now, I would prefer the school participate in recycling. School produces a lot of waste. We should work on reducing waste and recycling. Recycling models good citizenship and stewardship of the planet for the student body and aligns with what they're learning in the classroom." These are comments from teachers at VHS.
Others, not just teachers, have also expressed their concern for the lack of recycling in our school. The Food and Nutrition Department stated that they would wish to recycle more, and the fact that we don't is disheartening. In speaking with the kitchen staff, we found out that every single day, they received 20 boxes of food items or utensils that they end up throwing away. That's 100 boxes of things, 100 boxes that could be recycled every single week. Life skills students. So we took the time to talk to Mr. Nicholson, the life skills instructor at the high school, about how his students participated in recycling efforts in the past. They would collect the bins around the school, sort them, and then transport them to the correct place that in the past could have either been a bin at the school or driving it all the way to Finland. According to Nicholson, sorting the recycling for the life skills students promoted education, inclusion, and also had an aspect of fun in it. It was a great educational opportunity because not only did it allow them to work on organization, diligence, and a greater work ethic, but it also allowed them to get out of the classroom. Now, I remember my freshman year was the last year that they did sorting, and I saw them and heard them like walking in the halls and talking with a ton of students, and it was a really great way for them to socialize with others and others to socialize with them. And it formed wonderful relationships and bonds, and overall, it was a great way to spread inclusion in our hallways.
Brief recycling history at VHS. Eight years ago, we started a free recycling program. This was used by the community and junior high school, so it was more just a community thing that quite a bit of people use. The company that we were using started charging us. Then we got a grant for recycling bins to be placed in all the classrooms, which of course are still in there, just not being used. There was no funding, so we tried to find alternative companies, and we were finally given a grant, and we decided on Honey Creek. COVID hit, and of course, you know that affected schools in many ways. And we lost our funds for recycling. So we began to use the Vinland Recycling Complex, which is out in Vinland. We used that for a bit, but then Vinland emailed, I think it was Douglas County, and it was of a USD 348 truck taking recyclables. And they said that we couldn't use that anymore because it was for residents only. And so that's where we are now. We currently don't have any.
Why we chose Honey Creek? So if you don't know already, Ottawa Sanitation picks up our trash. We thought, a couple years back, before COVID, when we were researching the companies, we thought that it would be convenient to try Ottawa Sanitation for recycling. They proved on multiple occasions to be unprofessional, unhelpful, secretive, and inconsistent, both a couple years ago and now, when we called them back multiple times. Honey Creek, on the other hand, was incredible. They offered to let us tour. They were cheerful with communication. They had wonderful reviews. They were informative and helped us with any questions we need. So to us, our choice was obvious.
Here's the cost for it. We weren't sure if we would be able to get funding for this year, so we went ahead and raised the money ourselves for the rest of this year for recycling. We just need the approval for that. And for that is $750 for them to bring their recycling bin there or to the school. We got a seven-yard one, which would be big enough for the school and big enough for even community members and the junior high schools use it as well.
And that is a one-time payment?
Yeah, one time. And then it's $165 a month to get those picked up and brought to their facility.
If you will look on the other side of your sheet, it should display all the cost information. Or, yes, just on my different piece of paper. This year, so like we said, we wanted to get started as soon as possible, and weren't sure if there were any extra funds for us. We found sponsors for January through June. That covers the 750 setup costs and six months of $165. And then for future years, we are asking for $1,980. That's 165 for 12 months. So the current pledged sponsors. Solar Planet Incorporated, Jay Landruth, Marlin Construction, Brian Lantis, Baldwin State Bank, Brian Butel, South Baldwin Farms, Caitlin and Gabe's Purgen, Baldwin Feed Company, Steve Wilson, Central Soy Foods, and Jeff Collins. Total pledged amount of money covers all of this year, January through June, so $1,740. We do not have any written form of their payment yet because we can't set up until this plan is approved. But all of those, all of these sponsors, once called, were very willing to set up a partnership with us. And I thought that was a great way, a great display of our community's care and love for what we're doing here at VHS. That concludes our presentation, and we thank you very much for listening to us. If you have any questions, we are very willing to answer. And yeah, thank you.
Well, thanks to start with. One, I appreciate that you included references. And I also just have to say, well played to pop it up the mission statement of the high school. You got to tip your hat to someone smart like that. That was, that was, it was an effective public speaking tool. So I, in all seriousness, you guys obviously took this seriously. Very professional in your presentation, and that's very, very noted. It's obvious the passion that you have for this, but it's not passion without purpose. You did your homework. You came correct, and so I just want to compliment you on that part of what you've done to work to get to this part, so.
I just want to piggyback on that. We just appreciate both the quantitative and the qualitative research. You have such a well-planned research plan in place. And one in seven kids at the high school, that is amazing. This is a real concern for high school students.
Yes, definitely.
I appreciate the background, the history on that, as someone who's coming in new. You asked a lot of great questions, and you got a lot of great background information. Ms. Rowland, that's not cost prohibitive, is it?
No.
I have a question, though. I mean, obviously, this is for next year. We don't typically make budget decisions same day, so I don't want to shut anything down. But it's not a huge amount of money, but it's also, it's a process thing. It has nothing to do with the nature of the request. What I have a question about, and this also is a question for Nate, with the amount of food, we have money in that account that we need to spend down, that's been clearly communicated. Is that something that could qualify? I mean, as I'm putting the two presentations together, is that potentially something? I don't know if you would know the answer, but maybe you could look into.
I have at least some research.
If that would be a qualifying expense, and if other things get recycled too, so be it. But if we have, if we have the amount of kitchen waste, which makes sense, I've seen the forks saying it, and if we have a way to do that that also qualifies for that line item, maybe that could be another way to be creative. Because a thousand here, a thousand there, it all adds up, so I'm not minimizing, but there might be some things that are worth looking into before we, before we make a definitive decision.
I think that, just already, of a thousand here and a thousand there, you know, with school being in session nine months roughly a year, I mean, would you anticipate meeting that same monthly service for the months of the summertime? You know, and is Honey Creek cheerful enough to say, you know, we'll let it sit for maybe a month and a half or two months before we pick it up and that, but you're knocking 165 bucks off?
Personally, from the times we've spoken with Honey Creek, they have been just incredible, as we stated, and really.
Very reasonable.
Flexible. I feel like that could definitely, definitely be a possibility. The reason we went with 12 months is because, we stated it briefly, in the past, when we had a big recycling bin, the community also used it. And so I figured it might be useful to use it over the summer as well. But I definitely agree. I mean, a school's not in session, they're sure.
I don't know that a lot of the first year.
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
I think the community part is an available component, especially, not to malign anybody that has been in mine already, but I'm not sure, city recycling program actually does a lot of recycling.
Yeah. What are other thoughts or questions?
Are the public allowed to ask questions?
No.
No?
Not during this time, sorry. You can ask questions later, but at this time, this is the business at the board table. Any other questions?
Yeah, sorry, I'm actually, that's a tough question. I mean, I don't have the answer to this. A lot of recycling efforts turn out to be dependent on the kinds of resources we're recycling. I'm assuming this is just one big bin, and everything's going in there, sort of later on. Do you all have a sense for the percentages of different recycling amounts that are there?
Yeah.
What's paper, what's aluminum, what's plastic? And I'm particularly looking at, because I know that plastic is not one of those things that is recycled as much as it should be.
Yeah.
And the chart you have here is a, is a good chart. And I, and you mentioned the, you know, the common frames we all hear, reduce, reuse, recycle. Boy, it would be good to be proactive, right? I'm all about recycling, but if we could reduce the amount of plastic.
Of course.
Yes, yes.
It would be terrific, right?
That's the first thing.
So do you guys even track that? Do you have a sense for that?
We don't yet. We, in our plans for this coming year, like before going into this, that is something we definitely wanted to tackle, the reduce aspect.
And there's quite a bit of ideas that we already have for reducing that we, we know that we can.
We don't have the answers yet. That was going to be, after we did this, that was going to be probably our next step. But right now, we don't have the answers. For the sorting part, though, hopefully, well, I don't know how well the life skills students sorted. I'm assuming well, because it's sorting, it shouldn't, anyway. But because it'll already be sorted, I'm sure, also coupled with Honey Creek's evident reliability, I feel as though a lot of it will be put to good use.
They were also willing to give us a tour of the facility and how they do everything, so we can know through that.
Well, I appreciate that answer. I mean, I think many of us are invested in this whole process of trying to recycle the consumables that we use. But we have very little evidence oftentimes of whether those actually get recycled. So it's good that you guys have researched this company and really thought through what actually happens in the future.
Yeah. Any other questions? Thank you, guys, very much.
Thank you guys so much.
We appreciate it. So, board members, what's the comfort level? I don't, I don't sense strong opposition, but I mean, at the same time, do we want to give some time to look into what funding options might be available?
I don't think we need to be, I mean, they've already got the first year, regardless of the year.
Right. And just.
Catching two birds with one stone.
In the context of an environment, especially, that is so difficult. But, but yeah, so let's revisit this once everyone's had some time to investigate where the right, where the right fit would be. That's great. Okay, we'll move on to the girls' golf team proposal. Mr. Stavounis is going to talk with us about that.
Well, apparently, if you want to clear a room, invite me to speak to you. I mean, geech. Well, I'm not very entertaining. Wow. They all laugh, you know, it's next.
And I apologize about this tech savvy as an environmentalist. Who knows? So we have had some students and families talk to me over the past six or eight months about the possibility of adding girls' golf to our offering of sports in the future. Currently, we don't have a girls-only golf team. We have a golf team in the spring that's co-ed. Kind of over the years, participation numbers, guys and girls, has kind of been hit or miss. But those numbers have grown the last several years. We've gone from two or three girls' golfers on the team about five or six years ago, it's pretty consistent, if that, to we had seven or eight last year. I didn't look it up to get the exact number, but it's one of those, every year it's grown for the last five or six years. So on your handout, the side with small writing, went through board policy. We've got guidelines to follow to add a sport for the district. And I've written those down and then given my answer right underneath it. Adding girls' golf to our program would meet the, would benefit students aligned with our district mission and value statements. Number two is availability of qualified sponsor or coach from the ranks of the school district personnel. We currently have golf coaches on staff, and we have also added a, or hired a middle school teacher this fall that was a college golfer. She is interested in potentially helping golf, coach golf if we add this. Available of existing facilities, this is kind of a tricky one. We don't really own a golf course, obviously. However, the district already pays a membership to the BGA, which allows us to use that facility for all of our athletic teams, not just golf, but we use it a little bit for golf, along with cross-country and track practices. So that fee would not increase, as we already have that opportunity. And we currently, for the boys, for the golf team in the spring, we currently use the Ottawa Golf Course. They actually do not charge us right now, so hopefully that would continue. Hopefully, that continues for whatever season it is, but that's always subject to change, obviously. And then we use Twin Oaks, the little driving range pitching putt course up on K10 for a nominal fee. Evaluate the cost of the program. I've got that. Evaluate the cost of the program, I've got that kind of a proposed budget down below. Availability of local competition, girls' golf is booming. We would actually, if we add girls' golf, it would become a league sport. We would have enough schools in the league to make it a league sport. But a lot of Kansas City schools, Kansas City area schools are adding this program as well, just as another opportunity for their students to compete. Student interest survey is on the back page, I'll get to that in a second. And then, impact on existing programs is a very tough one to predict, even with the student interest survey we sent out. Obviously, the girls that compete in golf in the spring couldn't do it in the fall and spring. The activity association only allows us to have one season per sport per year, so there would be a little bit of an impact there. But it would be tough to tell who, you know, do they want to play volleyball or golf? Or could they do both? That's kind of one of those, that's going to be the wild card out of all these requirements by the board. The proposed budget at the bottom, I kind of built that looking at what we do for the spring golf season, and I estimated on the high end, the coaching salary, what I listed there is a coach at the 6% of the base salary, but with all 10 years of coaching experience, just to kind of give us a high-end view. Tournament entry fees, I would imagine it will be similar to the boys' season. That being said, that number is for a full JV and a varsity schedule. I don't know that we would have that right out of the gate. Uniforms is kind of a once every four or five years, you know, it's, golf uniforms are pretty simple, it's polo shirt and a windbreaker or something like that. Transportation, what we do in the spring is our coaches drive vans, so the fee there would be, basically be fuel reimbursement to the district. And then, course rental, like I said, we've already paid, we already pay the Baldwin Course. Ottawa, there's currently no charge, and then Twin Oaks, the way they work with this is we pay $100, gives our team access to their course, driving range for the spring, and then we buy range cards. If we run out of range cards, we may need to buy a few more, but right now, they're really good to us, and hey, we need more range cards, they need some balls picked up. So we, we trade services, our golfers go pick up golf balls for a day, and they give us extra range cards. So I mean, really, all in all, the pricing isn't very expensive to add this program. Sorry about the typo, I did cross out. Apparently, I can't do math and type and try to get interviewed and filmed for some TikTok thing they were doing in some class this afternoon. So, on the backside of this sheet, we did send out a student interest survey, we sent it through 7th through 12th grade. Didn't get a ton of result, ton of answers. Part of that is, if there's not, if a kid's reading about a golf interest survey and I've got no, absolutely no interest, I'm probably not going to fill it out. And students aren't real great about checking their email. But the numbers we did get back, 15 students are interested in potentially playing golf at Baldwin High School. Seven of them in the fall season were a definite yes, with 10 more undecided. Not sure I want to do a sport in general, or hey, I might want to do two. I'm not sure what my offseason basketball schedule looks like, I mean, some little factors like that. Which season would they prefer, would girls prefer to play golf in, was kind of split 50/50, which kind of surprised me. I thought it'd be skewed a little more toward, or shifted more towards the girl's side. But to counteract that one, question number five, would you play golf if only a co-ed team were offered? Only four girls said yes. I think therein lies the biggest answer out of all the survey. I kind of look at it as, kind of like we did when we started wrestling, girls wrestling. If we build it, they will come. You know, we started girls' wrestling with three or four girls a year when it was co-ed, and now that it's girls-only, it's exploded. I think we've got right around 32 right now. We added a couple more today onto that program. So it's kind of one of those, I think that will, will happen with a girls' golf program as well. Can't prove it, obviously, but that would be my prediction. And then we did kind of just, hey, what is your golf skill level? 19 girls, little to none. Eight, I've played some, and two are very skilled and play often. Just to kind of give us a picture of what we're getting into. And then, survey, survey comments at the back bottom, pros and cons. Lot more pros, pros than cons, the only two cons were, I want to play one girl, I want to play in the spring, and then the other one, I don't want to do it, period. Everything else was a positive, as far as the comments. So what I am proposing is, and I don't expect an answer tonight by any means, but for us to look at this going, for, going forward with the same structure we've done with adding sports in the past, where it's self-funded for the first three years. So really, for three years, it'd be no cost to the district. So that's kind of my spiel, but we've got a potential girls' golfer in the crowd, and she's going to give a much more entertaining speech than, it has to be more entertaining than mine, so come on up, kiddo. You want me to interview you, or you can do that in your speech?
I can, I can do it.
Go for it.
Hi, my name is Peyton Wright, and I'm here to talk to you about the possibility of adding girls' golf at Baldwin High School starting next fall. I started playing golf when I was five years old. During that time, I have spent a lot of time practicing here at the Baldwin Golf Association with my dad. I've also been lucky enough to get to work with Jeff Berry and Greg Capps at Twin Oaks. Golf is something that I love, and I want to play for Baldwin in high school. Unfortunately, right now, the only opportunity that I have is to play against the boys. I've been approached by four other schools to play for their team, but I'm hoping to play for my hometown school. This picture represents my thoughts on golf right now versus what golf could look like in Baldwin. I appreciate that there is an opportunity to play with the boys at Baldwin, but women's golf from the women's tees is a completely different game than the men's game from the men's tees. I also think that's very important for girls to have an opportunity to play against girls. Since I've started playing competitively, I have, I have only competed against girls. I want girls from Baldwin to have the same experience as any other school. If you look at the most competitive golf schools in our state, they can, they compete in the fall against girls. For example, La Miga won state this year. One of the girls that I compete against in US Kids Golf won state individually. I want to have an opportunity to, to compete against the best female golfers in the state, and to do that, we need a girls' golf team. Also, if you look at the college and professional levels, girls never compete against boys unless it's for a charity. I may want to play golf in college, most colleges recruit female golfers during their golf season. If I find that I'm interested in competing golf, competing at a college level in golf, having a high school girls' golf team will give me more experience competing against any other girls. I hope that you, as a school board, will consider starting a Baldwin Bulldogs girls' golf team. Thank you for the opportunity to share my thoughts.
In board docs is the uploaded picture that I referenced.
Yeah, it should be in folder, but I'm not sure.
Megan took care of it and got it to us. She sums it up. To get recruited, you got to play against girls. She wants to compete for our team. You know, if we don't add a sport or options, or our options would basically be play co-ed in the spring, or look at cooperative agreement with other schools. That being said, I have not asked the question out of Kasia, although I'm 99% certain we can't cooperative agreement in fall and then have girls on our team in the spring. 99.9% sure of seeing that. I haven't specifically asked that out of transparency, but, you know, she hits me on the head, she wants to play with Baldwin on her shirt instead of Wellsville or Udora or whatever it is.
If we do this payment, would it be possible that you agree to only competing against women as a, like, head in Baldwin and or City and Cape?
I just want free lessons. I want free lessons. So my thoughts going forward, I will probably, we're in the thick of scheduling for fall sports for next year, so I will probably start penciling together a potential schedule. Obviously, we wouldn't sign any contracts until we know it's official, but I've already kind of put feelers out and lots of interest and availability to build a schedule, so it's kind of where I'm at at this point in the process. Any questions?
So this would just be a high school program, or would junior high kids be eligible to play?
It would be a high school program.
And it has some shit to, or competition shit to have, girls in the.
Girls in the fall, boys in the spring.
Boys in the spring, so would there no longer be a co-ed?
Correct, correct. We've got to do one or the other.
Yeah.
But as far as middle school golf, there's, there's weird Kasia rules. We can actually play a middle school kid at the high school level, but they only get four seasons. So if you play in eighth grade, you just, you got to sit a year somewhere. I mean, it's, it's goofy. And there's, nobody in her area has middle school golf.
Okay, so just.
It would be a high school program.
How many boards do we have?
13 last year.
Full disclosure, I serve on the BGA board, have for quite a while, and for what it's worth, the BGA is very supportive of this, we love them, and our kids come out to our local course and play and practice, and are thrilled to be part of it.
And she mentioned Greg Capps and Jeff Berry there.
Yeah.
Greg Capps is our boys' golf coach or spring golf coach, and Jeff is a teaching pro out at Twin Oaks that works right alongside with Greg with our kids. Can't really coach him, but he can go by and tweak his swing as he's picking up balls or giving them extra buckets of balls, so.
Can you help me with the adjustments to the proposed budget?
It's down there in blue ink.
Right, and so does that replace the coach?
That would be a coach with the zero years. So what we do on experience, we have a, our salary scale, we have, is 6% of the base salary. But then we give a quarter of a percent for, per year of experience, up to 10. I just either fat fingered it when I typed it or can't do math when I was.
Well, no, I know.
So that was the, that would be the low end for a coach's salary, it'd be 24, 48, based on this year's salary schedule. High end with, maxed out with 10 years of experience would be 34, 68. So it's just a little, that's why that's the, kind of the range, but I did put, like I said, I put the high end as a proposed budget, so we know what our target fund range is.
And just so I know what I'm looking at with the survey, the 15 girls that, 15 year women, that they were interested in playing golf, including the 13th and 17th grader that's been following.
So it's, and that's kind of where it kind of leads me to that, if we build it, they will come. I mean, most, more of the numbers are lower. Miss Peyton's an eighth grader right now, she's looking at her high school career. And that's why we should extend that survey down through the seventh graders.
I will say, from, from mind, the thing, one of the, one of the things that schools try to do is try to figure out ways to get kids involved. And this is just another opportunity to get kids involved when they may, you know, return home and not do it. Gives them an opportunity to get involved with something that's a lifetime activity. Whereas with football, there's generally a definite end. With volleyball, there's going to be more than, more than likely a definite end. A game like, like golf is something that is a lifetime, and it, men and women, it's a great, great skill for that. I will also say, I believe athletics are some of our best at-risk programming for some kids, and you talked about an opportunity, a gateway for, for students to get recognized and maybe go play college, go to college. So I, I think that there are a variety of big picture components that make this a very beneficial opportunity for kids.
And this would just help title line-wise, but I have not, full disclosure, I haven't ever, I haven't lately dived, dove into the numbers and broken them down, but another offering for girls is never going to hurt that number.
Two things, and one maybe later down the road, but one, you said Udora and Wellsville started it.
Oh, yeah, Wellsville.
Wellsville started it, I think, two years ago, Udora started it, I believe this was their first fall.
Yeah.
And then my other one question is that, you know, a large percentage of kids want to explore it, they don't have much experience, but plus your expenses, so maybe that's one reason they have not ever.
Right.
It's, so.
We do, the school does have some sets of old clubs that we've latched on to over the years, or people get rid of, and, and I mean, kind of treat them like quote-unquote rental clubs, we've got some that.
I don't want to speak for a board that's not here, but I think the BGA would help facilitate, we end up with a lot of clubs sometimes, we could help facilitate.
That's where I'm at. So I'm sure we'd be happy to help on that.
The shafts on these clothes feel great.
It depends on whether I've hit a ball in.
Yeah, there's nothing like getting people excited about golf, than giving them an old set of clubs. Go ahead, you can have the golf ball.
Any other questions? Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
How did you guys do in basketball tonight?
Oh, it was 49 to 8.
49 to 8?
Yeah.
Us?
Yeah.
Us.
Wow. So, Gee, when do you, in terms of working out the schedule, you had said you didn't expect us to sign that, to sign on it tonight, but when, but you're going to be working on that soon, so.
I mean, I can pencil one together, and if we say, I mean, if schools say, yeah, you can come, they'll honor it in March. I mean, they're not going to get it, they're not going to give us a quick deadline.
Okay. So if we, if we came back to it.
December or January would be nice at the latest.
Yeah.
But.
Is that, is that where everybody wants to stay on that, too? Okay, all right.
What was the last part?
I was just, oh, thank you. I was just asking when he would need to know by, if, by coming back to it next month, does that squeeze scheduling? He was talking about making this fall schedule. Okay, so is it, is it the board in agreement that we want to come back to this next month and make a decision on it? What's, where's everybody at?
I have, I have.
Okay, so I'm just, that's my, my fallback, I'm not making every motion.
Susan just made a motion.
Okay, good, all right. Second, so Susan hoofed and Kelly seconded to approve the creation of a girls' golf team, team for the fall, right, for Baldwin High School.
There would be donation funded for three years.
Yes, it's self, as Gary described, it's self-funded for the first three years. Okay? Get that, Megan?
I'm in favor.
Just jumbling that. All in favor? Yeah, I was just letting her take a minute, because I didn't say it very well. All in favor?
Hi.
Motion carries, 7-0. Okay, well, that takes that off the list. Okay. All right, Booster Club, Safe Night After Prom. Mr. Dodge, and do you want to talk about where that was at in the, in terms of how that, the transportation alternatives for a different type of after prom?
Okay, if we don't, if we could have our, our parents that were here, yes.
Sorry, I didn't see you.
Nope, they snuck in.
There's the SNAP.
The SNAP crew. There's an opportunity to do something creative with after prom. My, my three years as a communications director, and now coming into this year, I find myself with three nights that I get very little sleep, homecoming, prom will be, will be one of them, and then graduation night. And, and we've got, we've got an idea that's come our way, to do something creative and provide some transportation as part of it. And so I, if we could have our guests come in and speak to that with their program, that would be great, and then at the end, I'll have my ask to that, so you mind?
No, I don't mind.
Okay.
You put me on the spot.
Thank you.
I'm Casey Frost, and I am head of the SNAP committee. We happen to be surrounded by those of us that are on it. Our first time putting together the SNAP program was last year. We loved it, we thought it went great, the kids all had a great time, we felt like it was a very safe environment. With that being said, you always go back and evaluate and reevaluate how things went, how, what can you do better, what things need to be changed. And one area we felt really needed to be addressed was really bringing those kids together, keeping them together, hence the whole name of this program, a Safe Night After Prom, and then making sure everybody disperses together. One way we thought about creatively changing that was to provide them an opportunity to all come together after the prom, board buses, and actually take them to a venue. So we all board the bus together, we all are together, it's at main event, that is our hope. We have secured the venue, so if this all goes through, we're ready to roll with it. We've talked to the student council, we've got some great fundraising ideas in place. Everybody stays together. Everybody stays together, and then when it's over, we load the bus and we come home together. With that being said, we did give away prizes last year. And you know, they participated in games and they earned tickets and they got prizes for being in attendance. That led to not everybody got prizes, right? Because it was a random drawing, which is how that works. I mean, that's just the way it goes. But it also made us feel really bad because we know all the kids had helped out. We all worked hard, but then some were leaving with a $5 gift card and some were leaving with five prizes. So taking that into account, what this, this activity or this after prom would lead to is then once everybody gets home and we get off the bus, every student gets a gift card, like a Visa gift card or a cash gift card. That depends on how much we fundraise throughout the rest of the year. But Mr. Dodge, if you're okay, I'll just go ahead and go on to the ask. What we met with Mr. Dodge about earlier in the month was transportation to and from. Obviously, we would appreciate some buses from our district to help us out. I'll turn that over to Mr. Dodge and kind of let him share with you our conversation and why we're here with you guys tonight. So, thank you.
So past practices, have you been any time we've got individuals who are not students or members of the school just utilizing buses that we would basically charge for them? And so if you've got someone who's gone to prom and they happen to be a student from another district, that would put them in that situation to be, do we charge them the rental fee? Do we create a separate bus and all of that? So you've got students that would have to ride a separate bus because it would be the rental bus versus students that went with a USD, a 348 student could ride on that. So long story short, what I don't want to do is create an obstacle that would prevent students from participating in this opportunity that they've got set up. So what I'd like to do is ask the board to waive that, that component of it so that we can provide the transportation, so that students have a safe alternative for that after prom component. And they've got an amazing, based on what I heard at that meeting, there's an amazing opportunity to get a lot of kids doing something positive and proactive together offsite, so.
And during the school year, that was some of our fundraising activities, was to get the kids involved right after Thanksgiving. And we went to a StuCo meeting last week and they were on board to help out. So I think it'll be a year-long participation effort as opposed to just a few hours after prom.
Students have some skin in the game, if you will, to that.
So full disclosure, I'm a member of the SNAP committee. I don't want to see this on some Facebook page of conspiracies later. I'm one of, I'm one of the crew. And, but I was not a part of any of this process as far as the conversations that began at the building level, which is where they should begin. So thank you, girls, for doing that. And then as it funneled on up through the chain of command with Mr. Dodge, wasn't a part of that. I'm voting for it. I would feel more comfortable not making the motion. But I did want to just be honest that I'm part of, part of the team and I support it as an individual board member. But I'd rather not make the motion for those reasons.
Is one bus going to be enough?
We had talked about we would need three buses.
Yeah, okay, I figured eight plus.
Yeah. So what this plan would do is those to go to this, you'd have to ride the bus. So students would not be driving themselves to ride the bus. Talked about wristbands. Are those still the, so there'd be a wristband. So there's some way to manage that. So parents would know, you get on the bus, you're going to main event or, it's still main event, right? Okay, main event. And there's that way to control it. So three buses would be more than adequate, I think.
I hope we provide three buses for those Safe Night After Prom activities.
Wait for the rental fee.
I wait for the rental fee.
I'll say.
Please, please.
Oh, thanks.
Susan has moved and Tony has seconded that we provide three buses and waive the fee for transportation in support of the Safe Night After Prom event at main event in conjunction with prom. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries seven, zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you very much. One question that we did not ask, and maybe this isn't the appropriate time, but bus drivers, is that part of the package? Okay, I just was, oh, my God. I don't want to drive the bus. Hey, girls, let's start working on our CBLs. Put on that hat. We're all due. Thank you. Okay, third grade speaking field trips or various forms. Third grade midtown field trip.
So is midtown actually a field?
Oh, you got it.
Yeah, I was hoping that third grade teachers could be here. We've been battling with only one of them available each day for the last couple days. So I don't know as much about it, but I think I can tell you what you need to know to make a decision. They have looked into this trip. It is what used to be Exchange City, if you remember back several years ago. They got accepted to the Kansas City, Missouri site in, on Grand Boulevard. So it's about as close to being out of state as you could possibly get. But it is in Missouri, so it does require your approval. They will be doing a, an economics unit, essentially a PBL in one day that covers the LA social studies and math standards that is almost impossible to replicate in the school setting. It would be school transportation. It falls within the school day. They would leave and come home just like normal, normal field trip. They would be able to be back in time for our buses to run their regular route. It is 1350 a student. That is going to be cut in half because of PTO donating $600 for a grade level to participate. The remaining 650 will be covered by parents. So there's no cost to the district. They just need your approval to make sure that they can cross state lines with a bus full of third graders. They're doing it in two days, January 30th and 31st. Half of them one day, half of the next. They could not accommodate the entire group. Questions about that? Hopefully I got everything covered. So if you're watching at home, hope I got it all.
Any questions? I move we approve the third grade field trip as presented. Who's that? I'm sorry. Chris seconded Megan. All those in favor of the third grade trip, please say aye and raise your right hand.
Aye.
Motion carries. On a related note, different field trip. Thank you, Mr. Wellsell. The high school has a trip, Crown Center for the choir program that is for December 15th at Crown Center, which again, KCMO. So what's involved in that is they, they go up there and they perform at Crown Center and they do ice skating while they're there. Is there anything I'm missing? December 15th, Crown Center. Both concert and a cappella choirs will be performing. Any questions about that out of state?
I will move approve that one.
Okay. Andy moved and Phil seconded that we approve the December 15th Baldwin High School choir trip to Crown Center. All those in favor, please say aye and raise your right hand.
Aye.
Motion carries seven, zero. And lastly, this has to do with a hole in the schedule and adding, an adding of a girls' basketball game, Baldwin High School basketball game at Pleasant Hill, Missouri. And the date of that is January 17th. So again, technically out of state, so needs our approval. Anything else? Does that cover it, Gary?
It's a mall's father.
Yeah, it's just
It's just across state.
Yeah.
This is a high school thing?
Yeah, this is for
The high school girl
The girls' basketball team.
Are they injured? Not our girls. I know our girls are going to
No, I knew. What are we getting ourselves into? Like, we want to win.
I will tell you, Coach T would like to have the boys because we have Veritas. But they don't have a girls' team, so that's not an option. But Pleasant Hill had an open game, so that wasn't.
I manually approve that one.
Second.
Kelly moved and Phil seconded to approve the January 17th game at Pleasant Hill High School. All those in favor, please say aye and raise your right hand.
Aye.
Motion carries seven, zero. Okay, on to possible supplemental benefits provider change information.
So when I, prior to starting in June, I met with Nate and Cory, I can't pay for it at the time, about looking at an alternative for the supplemental benefits provided. Something that we've looked at, trying to streamline the system, make it more user-friendly for our employees and then more, I guess, more user-friendly on the district office side of things. We have been manually, for lack of a better term, touching each employee's benefits as we're entering them into the system. Whereas we're looking at ways to put that into the power of the employee so that the employee has full control and has, you know, 24-hour access to their benefits in that realm. So Nate led us through a process to consider what else is out there.
Yeah, exactly that. I think, again, as we communicated to the board last week, this is just an opportunity to say, hey, what else is there? Our current benefits provider is Benefits Direct, good company. Don't have any issues. But again, we're looking at the internal process. How can we streamline also the benefits to our staff? Are they being educated enough? Do they know what we, what supplemental benefits are offered? Are there questions being answered? And we did invite Benefits Direct out to our
We also were looking at, are we getting the best rates for our staff?
Yeah, I mean, various, various things. So obviously with Benefits Direct, we met with them April, May last year, kind of talked over some good things, some bad things, some concerns. How can we do things better? And since they have done, done a better job, but again, wanted to look at some other options. We looked at Bukati, which is a company out of Kansas City. Currently is utilized, or Udora utilizes them. So we did visit with Udora School District as well. Kind of gets just their, you know, I think, don't quote me, three, four years. It's been a while since they've been with them. Very happy with them. I also looked at KASB, which is a branch of, from KASB for their benefits. Overall, we found that the operating system is pretty comparable across the board. We found with Bukati, the value of the stewardship and working with the staff. They will come in, they will answer questions, they will walk through everything with them. There's just, there's that extra benefit for us there. We're not really, we don't need to seek approval. But again, wanted to communicate with the board that, you know, blessing, if you will, this is kind of the direction that we would like to go. I think there's, again, a great benefit for not just the district, but the staff. So do you guys have any questions on that?
So supplemental benefits like that.
So like your life, it wouldn't be anything that would be, it wouldn't, well, wouldn't be, our health is, Blue Cross Blue Shield, we have consortium with Green Bush. It wouldn't be a part of the package. They would not rate those. It will be built into their system, okay? Dental, things of that nature, but mainly just the supplemental pieces.
Some dental vision, cancer, accident.
Yeah.
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah. No, and actually, we, you know, we should be, there's a, I would say 98, 99% chance that we can, we'll roll over everything we currently have with our staff now as far as what we offer program-wise. We had one company that was really inside the box. It was what they wanted to do, what they can offer. And it really just, it held us back from having that flexibility. Bukati gave us that flexibility. So we won't lose anything there. Plus the, plus the negotiation for potential metal, better savings.
They are, partners are a larger pool in terms of their coverage. And so we were able to get access to some better rates, I think. It's kind of the message that I'm, from that and things. Having been in Udora and they are boarded, that I will tell you, it is very user-friendly from the staffing side of things. Their, I guess, their annual enrollment day, it's very quick, very easy. You understand that you have your login. You can go in and make changes as you need to. It really does empower the employee, the staff member, the employee regardless of those benefits.
Right, and even on the admin side. We, if we have an individual that's leaving the district, we type in an end date. It's filtered through all the benefits. It's just, just great stream, yeah, it's good. Any questions? Any other questions? Okay.
Three.
All right, thank you.
Sounds like a win-win. Okay, operations update.
Nothing in particular, other than I just want to give kudos to Mike and his, his crew over the last couple weeks with their efforts to really disinfect and deep clean. In fact, Mike just showed up now after running a 360 machine over at the high school with some crew. The Thanksgiving holiday couldn't come at a better time for that, for that end of things. But Mike and his team, as we've transitioned to this environmental program overseeing the custodians as well as the grounds crew, that change over has, in my opinion, gone very well. So, thank you, Mike.
Yes, thank you. There's been no shortage of things to deal with. All right, if there's nothing to add, operations update. We're going to call a brief recess for restroom break and then we'll transition to old business. Last Monday, right? Last Monday, Monday before. It was the fourth. We had, that was actually really exciting, just to report committee work back to you guys, because that was the process in which this list of all these people who have been working separately, aside from the operations, the executive committee that's been working, all of these three have been working separate processes, well, they're the same process, but repeated in different contexts, so that there's a good representation. And this last Monday, those groups got to come all together and have one big meeting at 5:30, so there were a lot of things that were neat about that, but aside from the creativity and going over all the different things that have come up as a result of information gathered thus far from the community, it was really neat to see students working aside retired teachers, sitting at the same table, interacting, everybody was all mixed together, so each table had, you know, staff, community representative, student, and that bared out at every table, and they all had the opportunity to participate in the activity that's sort of been called Build a Bond, but it was set with parameters at each table based on some of the priorities that have emerged throughout this entire process, from back to strategic plan up to more recent, you know, various forms of feedback that have been given through the survey. DLR went over the survey results with everyone to show, you know, what words emerged, what is that called, a word map?
Wordle.
Yeah, thank you, a wordle, so that would show what kind of priorities were emerging as a part of the data summaries. What else? Is that kind of the highlight? What else came?
Yeah.
Kind of touched on the high points.
The Build a Bond process, they had full-scale drawings of each campus, and then envelopes with all kinds of different, like, spaces to allow you to daydream, or for the community, for those different groups to kind of prioritize and visualize what they were envisioning. If, you know, it wasn't, didn't have any, it didn't really have, it was just complete freedom, basically, to take these pieces and just place them around, and then they hot glued them on, and, you know, it was just kind of, it was a good, I think.
Yeah. It was a good exercise, but then what they do as far as process is that when we come back on the 28th, is that the day? Whatever the next Monday?
Monday.
Okay. Monday, after Thanksgiving break, we'll have another one, and at that point, then they summarize all of the things that came out from each tables, so all these, and we'll read off and give props to all these people at our December meeting. We won't do leaky certificates, but we'll do a shout-out, because these people are showing up faithfully every single time and really putting in the work, but they'll summarize the work that happened among all the different groups, and then bring that back as the starting point for discussion at the next meeting. So that's where we're at on that, and Kelly or Phil, if you have anything to add at that point, feel free, but otherwise, I think that kind of summarizes it in a nutshell. Okay, perfect. All right, moving on to new business, we are at the selection of company for construction management at risk for possible bond project.
All right, this is part of the RFP tonight, this is decision night, in terms of checking with KASBE and with our attorney to make sure that we're covering things the way it's supposed to be by statute. The options moving forward tonight, as we go through the rankings, the board is at a place to accept the rankings with, from the comes up as a number one, and begin negotiations with that firm, or the board could choose to reject the rankings at that time and return to the RFP process. That's essentially the two paths tonight to that. In terms of trying to gather more information, in terms of what sort of discussion could take place, what we've been told is, because by having the discussion, we would be revealing content that was part of the executive session piece, we can't. So this is, this is the part where statute's there for a reason, but statute also puts us in this situation. So that's, being the messenger of that information is not what I was hoping to hear when we sought out that guidance today, but that is, that is what we heard.
I just ask a question for clarification. So if I understand you correctly, either vote on the committee's, unless results improve to move forward into that next process, part of the process, or we can decide to go back and continue the RFP process?
Right.
Whether that be additional...
So with the RFP, what we would do basically is we would go back to the drawing board with them and submit new RFPs, and we would then articulate, you know, what do we need to hear in terms of, this first time around, if we didn't come to what we felt was a decision that we can make, go through the process again. It would involve different questions, obviously, because you've already asked the first round, and so at that point in time, we would, we would need to develop that, that part of it, and then submit it back to them. In doing so, just to be upfront on that, would then put us back into the timeline of we have to give them the opportunity to resubmit their plan, they would then have to resubmit to the state, is my understanding, and then we'd have to go through the executive session interviews once again.
But it shouldn't take as long for them, because they've already put that in.
I think it would, the timeframe of it, I don't have that particular answer for you, Kelly, but I would imagine that it would probably take, at the quickest, you'd probably turn around, would be three weeks, because you do have to make sure that they have time to put their proposal together, and then get the rating from the state side of things.
But now, we've been through it, we at least all understand.
You understand the process? Yeah. Yes, yes.
You know...
I think there's, I think there's some positives from that perspective.
Yeah, I am, and so to dump tail off of what Mr. Dodge said, I was, and I know this may seem unrelated, but it's not. I was on a community forum one time, and someone said, what is the hardest thing about serving on city council or school board or whatever? And it's not the work, it's not the time, the hardest thing is about all the things by law you cannot say. And so I know that we want to have an active discussion, it would be against the law to do so, and so I want to be really clear about that, too. We have the rankings, and as, you know, to reiterate, what Mr. Dodge laid out is our procedural options. There, the two options are to approve and continue through the process, or to reject the findings and reinstate the RFP process, right? So we wouldn't, that does not mean going all the way back to the beginning, it means, right? So I just want to make sure everybody understands that those are the two options. Taking the plunge, because I know it's uncomfortable, I'll share that I will make a motion to reject the findings. I don't think the results serve their district, as someone who's been serving on the bond committee meeting, that's my position, and I totally understand if that's not where everybody's at, but I do want to be transparent that I don't want to just jump in and cut people off. We really can't have a lot of discussion anyways, but I also wanted people to know the reason why. Unfortunately, we can't say, well, Kelly, why do you feel that way, and what is Exhibit A, Point 1.2? I can't do that. Wish I could.
So with, so we've gone through the process, and we went through the process, and we had to step back and step back in, so we all understood what we were doing, and then we had an outcome. So what is the point of doing it all over again?
I can't, I have at least eight reasons, none of which I can say in open session. I wish, that's what I mean, I wish I could.
Other than, I guess, the processes, is that we were acting as a committee before to come to this board decision now to either accept the committee's results, or whether to move forward as, or to reject.
Well, that's one way of looking at it, and another way, I mean, again, I'd love to get into the weeds, but I can't.
That's a bit long, I'll second your motion.
Well, okay, so I formally moved, I moved that we reject the findings and reinstate the RFP process. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of rejecting the findings and going back, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
Nate, oh, sorry, yep. Motion fails four-three, three-four, I should say.
Thank you.
Well, nothing's been approved.
Yeah.
So...
So when you mentioned to accept the findings, is that the word we're using?
And to enter into a negotiation, or accept the findings and enter into negotiation.
Yes. So we're going to need to announce the firms in order before we go.
Sure, sure. So for number one, we had Lloyd Builders. Number two, we had Marland Construction, and number three, we had Russell. That's the final.
Okay, so this is just the day.
That's, that's correct, that's correct.
So what's the motion on the floor?
There's one.
The motion to reject the findings was failed, and so there is no action. Those are two options that failed, and then, then the other, the other motion is, those are the two options, so.
So, I'm not sure I'm wording you properly, I mean, we accept the findings and enter negotiations with the firm, let's be...
It's been, Andy moved and Chris seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. Raise your hand. All those opposed? Motion carries four to three. To enter into negotiation, Lloyd Builders. Thank you, Nate.
Thank you.
All right, board member input, co-op report.
There's not much to report on, other than the general conversations about special education funding that will, going into the legislature season, starting in January, I don't know if it's going to come back up in terms of fully funding special education. One other update for you guys is, the co-op's currently working on developing a social work decision for a chart. In the past, we've had some difficulty coordinating services between, like, our Baldwin social workers and our co-op social workers, that's been kind of refined, we can participate with all of the social workers that we employ, with the co-op and the district. Besides that, Tony, is there any other...
I wiped that meeting. It's an address sketch.
That'll work. But, yep, that's it.
Any questions? All right, miscellaneous. Any miscellaneous? So one thing I'd add, we can get more into it at a future meeting, but I, if you haven't seen your, there's email from KASB regarding, to kind of dump tail what Chris said, special education funding, it's something that people don't understand, it's a huge, it's a huge hole in federal and state funding, but local districts are required, not just legally required, but there's also an ethical, moral obligation to fund special education at the appropriate level. And what the general public doesn't know is that, and people can look that up for themselves, but there was a really good article that KASB put out encouraging people to get in touch with folks and to advocate about that, because where that money has to be made up is the local, the local district budget, and so that's, it's a good thing to have a better understanding about, because it's complex, but it's that way by design, so I thought that was interesting.
If I could just kind of put that in perspective here for locally, so after you take in what special education funding, which is basically flow-through, it comes to our budget and it goes straight to the co-op. The district pulls $750,000 out of our general fund to finish our assessments to the co-op. Over half of that, about half of that, extra 750, is to make up the shortage from the statutory requirement we're just not getting. So that's significant, that's stabbing, and the, here's the thing with special education, maintenance of effort by law says you have to pay, you cannot decrease there, you have to pay as much or more in the year prior, but morally, to that point, we wouldn't, we wouldn't cut there.
Right.
And so it's one of those things that we do gladly, but it's also one of those things that, through state funding, it needs to be paid at the legal amounts that's required, in my opinion, and that's something that I've expressed to you, I want to become more vocal about moving forward as well.
I did represent the board at the delegate assembly two sour days ago, I didn't attend in person, but I did attend by Zoom, so I wanted to let you guys know that I did make those votes on our district's behalf with those legislative priorities, and then the election of the new KASB designee for president, so I think that wraps up my miscellaneous stuff. Anybody else have anything? Superintendent's report.
Yes, I'm excited to talk about the support, the work we've been doing as an admin team with TASM, technical assistance...
an admin team with TASM, Technical Assistance Support Network, that has come in and helped us with our realignment with our MTSS process, our multi-tiered system of support. It's something that goes back to our, our summer admin meetings where we were trying to become more systemic with the responses we provide to students. And so Amy De La Rosa from TASM has been with us on a couple of different occasions, getting our admin team together, Ashley and Drew being a part of that, Laura Lee from the co-op to come in and just look at what we're doing systemically to support our students. You know, they, they go from the, the primary center with, with intervention supports, they go to the immediate center with intervention supports. You know, junior high to the high school, we want to make sure that just because you've left the building doesn't mean you're, you're leading a support network. And it's been really cool. And one of the things we've been able to do is, is prior meeting, we were looking at, at some of the data that we've gotten and, you know, moving forward what we want to do. And we, we talked about focusing on the social emotional side of supports that we can provide. One of the, the things that that provides us is something that all teachers in the district have a connection with. Now, when you do math or you do ELA, you run that idea that, you know, I'm, I'm not an ELA teacher, I'm not a math teacher, how can I do this? Well, behavior wise, everybody has a contact with students that go into that realm. And when we look at some of our data, that's, that's some of the area that we can provide some of the support for. So we're, we're coming up with that systemic process there. So that's been good. This, this last meeting that we had was another good meeting and I think the best thing that I've come out with it is I've been through these, these types of meetings before and you walked out heavy, you walked out, you know, this was a tough, we walk out of those meetings energetic and our, I feel, really feel like our, our academic team, our admin team is really, we're in alignment with each other. And, and we have tough conversations, we have loaded conversations, but we walk out knowing this isn't personal business and we're all trying to do what's best for kids. And this is something that we're willing to do the tough work for. And it's been fun. We laughed a lot. We came out with some good direction moving forward. Amy has us with basically some homework that we have to accomplish before our next meeting. And that, that's been good. So you've got that internal accountability to see things are happening. And those conversations are being had and they're going back to some building leadership team opportunities to finish discussions. So this year's focused on the, the district team level, so we have that district-wide approach. Next year, we'll be more focused at the building levels there. Through these conversations, we've been able to take care of what, what this board has asked us to do is look at our mission statement. And we went through that on our last meeting. We've come up with the draft mission statement. And it was impressive how quickly we came to that discussion, how the, how it came about and how in alignment everyone was with it. And so the next step is we'll, we'll take that back to the building leadership teams and so they'll have an opportunity to look at it, wordsmith it, make sure this really is, is proposing that message that the building, the buildings see it as our district mission. And then hopefully, it's, it's my hope by, in the December meeting, if not December, January, that we'll have a mission statement to, to bring to you. So it's the, the work that Amy's been doing and the work that TASM has led us through has been a lot of fun. It's been great to have the co-op involved in those discussions as well. That's, that's what I have for superintendent's report.
Awesome. I move we enter into executive session with Mr. Dodge, Brad Fink and I via cell phone to discuss potential litigation with legal counsel pursuant to the exception under coma for matters which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship. And the open meeting will resume, say, it's 8:43, nine? Is that too long? They go over? 9:00 PM. Need a second? Thank you. Chris seconded. All those in favor, please say aye and raise your right hand.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries seven zero.
Yes.
Morrison Wolfshneider. I saw him walk in the other day. I was like, who's that adorable little guy? Like, he gives names like Wolfshneider. That's my friend!
I move we enter into executive session to discuss superintendent evaluation process pursuant to the justification under coma for non-elected personnel. And the open meeting will resume at 9:06.
Just the board?
Just the board.
Second.
Okay. Motion carries seven to zero. So just be us for a minute, then we'll bring you in now. Okay. Is there a second? All those in favor, please say aye. All those in favor, please say aye. Motion carries seven to zero. Second. All those in favor, please say aye. Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you. Second. All those in favor.